I didn't feel identifiable.
I literally just said this thing.
I was like, wow, what is it like, uh?
A hundred and fifty three million dollars.
They were down the street. They were next door neighbors. Yes, sir.
Mr. Solicitor, you ready?
I'm ready.
We are ready.
Good afternoon, the Lubbock City of Chester deliberative meeting for Monday, November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. Look to my left and right, I see all the council here, including myself. Mr. Solicitor, it's yours.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of council, members of the public. Welcome to the Monday, November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four deliberative meeting for the City of Chester. The following ordinances are to be voted on. First reading of Bill Number eleven entitled Twenty Twenty Five Budget, approving the appropriation of specific sums estimated to be required for the specific purposes of the municipal government during the twenty twenty five calendar year. First reading of Bill Number twelve entitled Twenty Twenty Five Salary Ordinance, approving the salaries and wages for personnel employed by the City of Chester for the twenty twenty five calendar year. First reading of Bill Number thirteen entitled Twenty Twenty Five Business Privilege Tax, approving the tax for general revenue purposes upon persons, firms, companies, and corporations engaging in certain businesses within the City of Chester for twenty twenty five calendar year. First reading of Bill Number fourteen entitled Twenty Twenty Five Earned Income Tax, approving the tax of general revenue purposes on salaries, wages, commissions, net profits, and other compensation earned by residents and non-residents of the City of Chester for work done or services performed or rendered in the City of Chester for the twenty twenty five calendar year, with one percent of the residents and non-residents' earned income tax collections being designated to distressed pension payments. First reading of Bill Number fifteen entitled Twenty Twenty Five Local Services Tax, approving the tax for general revenue purposes upon the privilege of engaging in an occupation within the corporate limits of the City of Chester for the twenty twenty five calendar year. First reading of Bill Number sixteen entitled Twenty Twenty Five Real Estate Tax Levy, approving the tax rate on all real property and fixing the library tax for the twenty twenty five calendar year. First reading of Bill Number seventeen entitled Refuge Collection, approving the fee for the collection and disposal of ashes, garbage, rubbish, and refuse for the twenty twenty five calendar year. First reading of Bill Number eighteen entitled Master Fee Schedule, approving the addition of new Article nine three five entitled City of Chester Master Fee Schedule for the purposes of establishing a unified schedule of specific fees associated with the issuance of permits, inspections, applications, and other administrative costs for municipal services. First reading of Bill Number nineteen entitled Twenty Twenty Four Budget, approving a second amendment to the Twenty Twenty Four Budget. In addition to the aforementioned ordinances, the following resolutions will be presented to council for final passage. Resolution one one seven. Authorize approval for the appointment of Pierce Gilson as a patrol officer for the City of Chester Police Department effective December second, twenty twenty four, with one-year probationary period at the salary range as provided in the annual appropriation ordinance. Resolution one eighteen. Authorize the appointment to the of the following individuals as per diem cadets for the Chester Police Department effective December second, twenty twenty four, at the rate of fifteen dollars per hour, five days a week, not to exceed eight hours per day with no benefits. Daniel McNeil, Christian Taylor, William Mcoldrick, and Jonathan Barbosa. Resolution one one nine. Authorize the submission of a grant application to the United States Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, for the Environmental Justice Thriving Communities Program in an amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty dollars to be used for improvements of health outcomes for children in the City of Chester by remediating lead in homes where they live and distributing air purifiers to families with children who have asthma. Three hundred and fifty, what did I say?
You said three hundred and fifty dollars.
Three hundred and fifty thousand, not three hundred and fifty dollars. Resolution one twenty. Authorize entering into an agreement with Bocelli and Associates LLC, four oh five Gray's Avenue, Glen Olden, PA, one nine oh three six, to provide plan review and inspections on an as-needed basis at the agreed-upon cost schedule. That would conclude the list at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Most of these first readings for bills are carbon copies of what we had last year. There aren't many tax increases in the business privilege tax, earned income tax, local service tax, real estate tax levy, correct me if I'm wrong out there, somebody. But there will be an increase in the refuge or trash collection by fifty dollars. And the other thing I want to make note of is Resolution one nineteen, this three hundred dollar, three hundred and fifty dollar grant, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant is being applied for by Dr. Kristen Motley with the help of the Delaware County Health Department. It may be our last shot at a grant.
Under the EPA with the Justice forty designation, we can pretty much expect that that forty percent of dollars like this being earmarked to communities like Chester will end after January. So that's what, that's why that's very important. Any other questions or comments from council?
The ordinance to be voted on for the twenty twenty five budget, was all of this advertised? That it was going to be on Wednesday's meeting? Agenda?
No.
Huh? But to be on the agenda? I mean, was it, did we advertise the agenda that that was going to be on here?
Did you say advertised on your website or do you put it in the newspaper?
In the newspaper, isn't that what you're saying?
No, it's required to be posted twenty-four hours in advance on the website and a hard copy posted in the city.
And I'm asking, was everything done? Okay, then, that's, that's my question. So why is it on the agenda?
Well, can I ask you, if it wasn't, you said it wasn't advertised. Was it posted on the website? Okay. That's all that's required for the meeting.
Posted on the website, that's it?
Yes.
Also, is there another copy of this, this proposed budget too? If you get a chance, can we make sure that our controller gets one?
I have one for him.
Okay, thank you.
Can somebody explain Resolution one twenty?
Nikki Wagman. Hello.
Good afternoon, members of council.
Good afternoon.
So Resolution Number one twenty pertains to the Department of, excuse me, the Bureau of Licensing and Inspections, being able to perform certain, not being able to perform certain inspections in-house. For example, no one on the team is certified to do plan reviews. No one on the team is certified to do mechanical inspections, electrical inspections, or plumbing inspections. So in order to fulfill our reviews and making sure that we have appropriate certifications to do the work that we're charged to do, we have to contract with a third party.
Okay, so two questions. And not to put you in the spot.
Okay.
But I guess to put you in the spot. The first question is, we had a similar issue with a subcontractor in our license and inspection department when it regards to our electrical work and some bills and things, whatever the case may be, that, that whole thing happened. Is there a plan in place, so the first question is, is there a plan in place for the license and inspection department to actually train and certify our own employees so that we do not have to continue to subcontract and spend additional money out of a budget that we have to review anyway soon? That's the initial question, I didn't want to carry on.
Yes, the plan I did propose, or I did request, I should say, in my twenty-five budget for the department, certifications and training, a line item for that.
Okay. So I'll definitely keep an eye out for that. My second question is, it says to provide a plan review and inspections on an as-needed basis at the agreed-upon scheduled cost. So it seems to me as-needed basis is going to be pretty much every day since the City of Chester doesn't have anybody certified to perform those operations. And do we, is there a breakdown of how much is that going to cost us? Because at this point, like I said, we don't have anybody to fulfill those roles. So it's pretty much we're going to be subcontracting, subcontracting, excuse me, this company for everyday services.
So not everyday services, some permits don't require that level overview. And so for those simple walkout permits, we won't need the third party. But for those complex projects, that's when we would bring them in. The fee that was discussed was that the third-party contractor would get sixty percent of the permit fees established, and the city would retain forty percent.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
So the permit fee is a hundred dollars. The company is going to get sixty, and the city will get forty?
Correct.
How long do you think it's going to take for the men and women that are working here to get certified? And what services are you going to provide for them so that we're not outsourcing to a third party?
Right, that's an excellent question. I've been researching the different ways that we could get in-house certification. A lot of the team can get certified through the ICC, the International Code Council, as well as through the PA Construction Code. So the plan is after we, you know, I made the request, after it gets approved, I can start a training schedule between, for the first, I'm going to say, six months of tooling up in-house in order to be able to perform these inspections. But also in that time, we could maybe advertise for these roles again. They were in the twenty-four budget. I don't know if this is in, I don't believe that the, I mean, I'm going to call them MEP, Mechanical, Electrical, and Plumbing, inspectors are part of my twenty-five because I didn't have anyone tooled up in order to perform the inspections in-house. But also, I was advised that when they were advertised, we weren't getting a lot of responsiveness from, to the job descriptions or to the roles.
So you're saying absolutely no one in the department is certified?
For, to do those specific MEP inspections or to do planning reviews. The building code official is certified to do commercial and residential inspections.
Got it.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'll just, for clarity's sake, I just don't want you to walk away or anyone to walk away with the impression that many of these employees in that department have taken the test in the past. This isn't their first rodeo here. We've just had a challenge with getting people to pass the test. So I think we pay for the first test and maybe the do-over. I'm not sure about that. But what we're instituting now is sort of a training just to make sure that they're well-equipped to take this test and pass. In these instances, when you don't have, well, when you have as many people on the staff that aren't certified, it does create a burden, you know, because there's not enough nuisance inspection or there's far less nuisance inspection than we have nuisance inspectors. The people are coming in with the need for electrical, mechanical, and plumbing inspections, and they've been asked to go out and find their own plumbers, electricians, and mechanical inspectors that just bring us the results of what they have. That's certainly not the way we want to continue because, you know, we can't trust, we didn't put our eyes on that work. So the effort here is to use our employees as best we can to get them trained up to take the test, to pass the test this time. Many other municipalities fall into the same situation where they just don't have the staff or can't afford the staff. So it's not uncommon that companies like Boselli and Associates, and there's plenty of them out there, do provide their services for municipalities that are in the same shape we're in. The reason that mechanical inspectors, electrical inspectors, and plumbing inspectors, when the job is posted, don't take the job is because it just doesn't pay enough for them to, you know, take their time to, to apply and be on-site. So the contractor solution is very common. I know you've probably experienced it in, in your time at York and, you know, the other places.
Very much so. And just to add to that, it, having a third party, but having a third party that is under a contract where services can be more predictable, pricing can be a bit more predictable, should hopefully help with some of the, the past issues that have happened with, with having a third party provide services to the city.
So I think we all would like to see up here that our people that are employed with us get the best opportunity to, you know, be certified inspectors to serve the community that they've been working in for years. So I'll just leave it at that.
Any additional questions? No?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments on what we see in front of us? I just have a question, do we adjourn before the budget review? Or should I ask for public comment? I do see some members of the, of the public here today. Or is this a place for public comment?
It's not really the place for public comment. You can certainly ask if there's any comment from department heads or otherwise, and I think you should adjourn before.
Okay.
Why is it not a place if it's on the agenda?
Well, I mean, it's, it's really your discussion. If you want public comment, you can engage it and have it. But it's, it's not a public meeting where you're taking legislative action, such as a Wednesday meeting.
Okay, so department heads, any, anyone have anything they'd like to discuss, share?
So let me just get this straight. So the items, we're here to do a budget presentation, but not in deliberative, outside of deliberative?
Well, you can do it in deliberative, you can do either way, honestly.
I mean, I'm asking what is the proper, because it's on the agenda. And so if anything, we need to be presenting all of the ordinances that is on the agenda. So I don't understand why would we adjourn the meeting and then do a presentation when all of the, everything that's Gary B. presented is on the agenda. That would happen in the meeting, am I correct or am I wrong?
Ultimately, it'll happen Wednesday's meeting, correct? You can, it's been done in executive session, it can be done in the meeting. It's council and the mayor's preference.
Well, I think it's time for Mr. Troutman to take his stand. And you're part of the meeting.
Thank you, I need a relief from this. Counsel, this is the overview of the twenty twenty. I should know by now, thank you. Justin, this is an overview of the budget. It is by no means definitively finalized. It's by no means intended to be into the depth that we're going to get into in the next couple of days and weeks. But for now, it's intended to give a brief overview of where we're at and where we're going. So with that, Justin, please. So starting with the highlights. The budget for next year includes, as you heard, no real estate or library tax increases. The general fund revenue and expenses do balance before we start considering and talking about the unpaid prior year MMOs. We have included in this budget eight additional positions, of which they're all police or fire cadets. The investments that are in this budget include significant capital investments for bridges, demos, equipment, roads, traffic, traffic lights, and vehicles. Virtually all of this money is coming from other sources that are being grants or PennDOT or those types of, of other sources of money outside of the city's direct funds. The, there's program funds in here for housing initiatives, for some health initiatives, and some others as we'll work through the budget. I use the word restructure, license, and inspection. Maybe it's retooled, maybe it's refocused. But there's clearly an increased effort in that department to address some of the, the issues that have surfaced within the city for service. As far as grants, you can see a list of the grants. I use the acronyms, the ARPA, the CETA, the LSA, various. But you can see that there's significant funding that's coming through to the city. There will be an increased focus on the collection of delinquent taxes. And as was mentioned, the one downside, if you will, is the increase in the tax for the, for the rubbish. Here is some of the factors that we had to work with in order to get the budget to this point. We've heard and talked about extensively the pensions that are unpaid from prior years. We have, big, big factor was six point nine million dollars less to work with this year compared to last, twenty twenty-five compared to twenty twenty-four. Now, three of that's passed through, but the walkway here is clearly less money to work with. And the timing of the money is also going to be a factor that we've had to deal with because the state loan is reducing from five million to two million, and that comes in basically January second. So we're going to have tighter cash flow to work through.
Let me ask you about that, if I may.
Sure.
Is that the state's decision? That it's reduced from five million to two million?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess for the record, I need to say it, as opposed to shake my head, yes.
Is there a reason behind it, or is it?
Overall tightness within the state is what I, Commonwealth is what I, what I was related to me.
And that's the TRAN, as we always call it.
TRAN, yes, yes.
That's why it was so much lower.
So, and then because of the court cases that are involved, it's right that we have to have reserves put aside to be able to spend for the legal bills that could or could not be. They're coming in lower this year, but one of the factors that we have to deal with are the uncertainties. So some of these court cases are coming to a head next year. So that's part of what we need to put funds aside for. So next.
Are we paying the city panel, or is the, have you seen the state team paying those?
We, the city pays. The city's paying those fees. And in fact, some of the fees that the Commonwealth has been paying are going to start being paid by the city. We had to factor all that in, and a lot of that came out frankly last Thursday. So that which we were ready to go to production, we had to make some adjustments at the eleventh hour, which is part of the reason why it was delayed in getting to you. Next, please. Small print, didn't mean to be this way, but the point here is this is effectively tab one in your books. It is, there are six other funds in addition to the general fund that the city works with. And this happens to be three side by side, but it's tab one in your books for the list of the funds that we work with. Next, please. I mentioned earlier that there's less revenue to work with. I'm not intending to go through the different pieces of the pie. This is a visual to show you that the pie has shrunk. It's the different components of the revenue from twenty-four to twenty-five. This is the third chart inside of your tab two. Next, please. This is essentially the fourth and last page within your tab two, which is, the graphic is the table representation of the reduction in revenue. Four million dollars less in ARPA money for general purposes for the general fund, three million less in the TRAN that was just brought up by the mayor, and three hundred thou, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars less in grants for the general fund flowing through at this point. And that accounts for the vast majority of the reduction in the revenues. So the revenues otherwise are stable or increasing. So the revenue is pretty straightforward to understand what's, what's happening here. Next, please. The expenses. They're grouped here by these groupings for public affairs, public safety. You can see the different types of departments that are inside of it. They add up to the same amount that the revenues are, sixty-two point seven million. And you can see that, I point out the, the next to last line, the benefits. Citywide, they're twenty-nine million, or almost half of the city's operating expenses are in benefits. That's a major constraint, obviously, within the budget. Next, please. So the last thing I'm going to point on, point to is, as part of the process, we're changing the timing on how real estate taxes are going to be collected for the twenty twenty-five year that goes into twenty twenty-six. So let me start with, there is no change for the twenty twenty-four that goes into twenty twenty-five. So that which has been publicized on the website, we're going to honor that and keep with that so that the delinquent date, the last day to pay the taxes for twenty twenty-four will be February fifteenth of twenty twenty-five. That's going to stay the same. But this is the last year, it would be like that. Starting for the twenty twenty-five year, we are going to start doing taxes and collections the way the rest of, quote unquote, "the world" does it. Starting February first, on our ballot, the bills will be released. That way, the, we will be on the cycle that February, March are the discount periods. April, May will be the face period. And then after that, through December thirty-first, will be the late period. But the delinquency will start January first of twenty twenty-six. So that's the cycle we'll be going on. And we will be coordinating that cycle with our current third-party collector, which is eCollect. So we will be announcing this multiple ways. Starts here with the council's communication. Then it's going to be the web, and it's going to be published, and it's going to be reminders as we get toward the end of the year. And there's going to be multiple communications to try to remind residents, taxpayers, to try to take advantage of the discount. Try to take advantage of the face value. So with that, I believe that's the end of the slide presentation. Questions?
I'm going to tell you right now, I need time to go through this. I don't have any questions for you right now.
Sure. Yeah, I understand. Yeah, I understand.
I I need to really be able to go through this.
Okay.
I mean, same here. I just got this about 30 minutes ago or yeah, about an hour ago, about 1:30 or so. And I know you worked hard on it all weekend. I know you and Tom, you guys, and I appreciate you guys, and thank you. But again, we need to be able to go through this and to really digest a bunch of this because I see there's changes, and none of the changes are really highlighted. You know, that's something that I would have liked to see, you know, if for instance, if one salary was just this year, the other salary, I would like to see that highlighted so that I know, okay, well, here's one change. Or if it's going to be one change here, you know, this department's going to have this budget, but now they're having this budget. I would like to see those highlighted so that way we can get a better understanding of what the major changes would have been, or at least I I line item changes. And so I think council should be afforded the opportunity to really go through this packet and really digest it, and then we can ask questions.
Sure. And and a couple overview comments to your point is, out of fairness to everybody, you just get the books. And so I'm available as you need for questions, comments. We'll work through it. It's all geared toward being able to have it up for vote for December 11th, trying to avoid the last minute December issues that have been in the past. To your specific question, you haven't had time to look at it, so you don't you're not able to see it, but it is in there for each department, the changes for dollar values for the different line items. And so it's in there. And I understand you haven't had time.
I just didn't see anything highlighted.
Right. I I I understand.
Or bold, you know.
Right.
It was this this year and that this year. I would like to see a highlight or mark here or is something just so we can
Identify.
Identify those changes.
Sure. Understood. So.
I one one question. I see your hand scratched out the unpaid pension MMO.
Right.
It was typed in 41.2. You wrote in 43.2.
Yes.
Which one's the right number?
43.2. It's a typo.
Because there's one place you didn't put it, but that's all.
Exactly.
So there's a few things in here.
Schedule one, yes.
It doesn't make a lot of sense to go over, you know, department by department. I can ask those questions. But to council's point, what we will need to do when we get through this is that we're the ones who have to or should be in the position to communicate what not so much every number in this budget, but what has changed in the budget process, what's changed in the in the in the philosophy on how we can afford to to run this city. So that's really what we're looking for are those like key areas where there are key differences, key philosophies on how you're developing the budget of, you know, the thing that I I just keep running through my head, sitting in the room, the last day you guys were scrambling, were the decisions that were made in how to handle, I'm sorry, the outstanding, you know, pension obligation and like six different scenarios to choose from.
Yes.
Why we chose the one we chose and what's the impact, you know, moving forward. So we're really concerned about impact and and changes and how to communicate that to the layperson out here on the street. So we're hoping you can help us do that in the grand scheme of things.
Sure. And and that's that's fair. That's very fair. And we'll work through both the details and the bigger picture on how that gets communicated. And this is all intended for you to get comfortable with the ultimate voting and decision and the allocation of the resources that we have. So.
So moving forward, we have a council meeting on Wednesday. We will be asked to vote as a first reading. It gives us an additional two weeks before the next council meeting, when the second reading will be there. If we choose not to vote for it on its first reading, it will take us all the way to the meeting in December 26th, I believe, the day after Christmas. Unless there's some real pressing items, I would much rather not have a December 26th meeting.
Say it four times, so that people know back to me.
If at all possible.
Can I?
If we can get everything done that we have here, and it's scheduled to be done in the first and second meetings of of December, if we can all just put our heads together and try to march by that, and we won't have to come back the day after Christmas and and have a council meeting. Did you hear that in the back of the room, Scoop?
From up top too, but I think we do need the opportunity to really digest all that we have. It would have been helpful if it would have been highlighted maybe in red so that we could see the different changes, you know, what they are, because just looking at it like this is it's a lot to digest. And so I don't want to make a decision, just a rushed decision.
Oh, sure.
I don't want to be rushed into making a decision.
No, you're absolutely right. I'm really glad that we at least have this in front of us. Our job as mayor and council is not to create the budget, but to approve the budget, and we have to be confident that those who put the budget together did the right thing with our interest in mind and with the protection of, you know, tax dollars and city dollars. So let's take these next few weeks and just grill our CFO and every department head who's had input into this and our chief of staff as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a lot of questions and comments, but I mean, you and I have already had that conversation. My main concern, without being too lengthy, is really a Chester city, see the city of Chester sustain itself without all the outside help that we've been receiving. And it seems to me like that's not the case for the city of Chester, which is unfortunate. But the goal is to figure out how do we continue to operate as a city, the only city in Delaware County, sufficiently without outside, you know, access or whatever it may be. But like I said, I have a lot of questions in regards to that because looking over this as hindsight, I guess, we have a lot of things that need to be changed before this can go forward. Definitely.
All right. Well, let's work through it.
And I think, you know, I'll just say this, myself included, a number of the new council people, you know, often, and I say it a lot, oftentimes I say, oh, well, it wasn't this administration that voted on it, that was the past administration that voted on something. And so if I'm going to vote on something, I don't, you know, I want to make sure it's right, and I want to make sure that, you know, I understand completely, you know, everything that's in the budget because I don't want the next administration or next one to say, oh, no, it was a previous administrator that voted on it, and this wasn't right and that wasn't right. And so, you know, I'm the kind of person that asks a lot of questions, and I want to make sure I understand something fully and that, you know, I'm making the right decision when I vote on something. I feel as though if I don't have enough information, you know, I won't vote on it or, you know, I won't. I'm just not. I just want to make sure, you know, I'm doing the right thing and I'm voting on information that I have and I've had the chance to digest and to really go through line by line and understand the changes and make sure they're the right changes from my point of view, especially if, you know, you guys want me to vote on the budget, we got to make sure we go through it and we understand it. So and I just want to say I thank you. I appreciate all your hard work because I know that you work late hours. I've gotten emails from you at 11, 12 o'clock at night. So I know you work really hard and I commend you and I appreciate you, but we need an opportunity to review this.
And I understand the next step is to get your your comfort level on what we have and where we've gotten and how we've gotten there. So starting, I have a little bit of time this afternoon, but starting tomorrow afternoon, I can block out the whole afternoon if anybody wants to schedule time to start or if you want to take a day or two to digest it and then follow up with me as to when you want to schedule time, that that works.
Any other questions, comments for our chief, Angel. Sir? Seeing and hearing none and
One question.
There we go.
What happens, like, if I don't agree with something that's in the budget and then you're you're expecting us to pass the first reading?
I would I would suggest, and solicitor definitely should weigh in, but the budget would be quote unquote approved in totality. And to the extent somebody isn't comfortable with something or they want something changed, then it's rubber's rules with I've I move to adapt or amend the budget X second, go through that process if if there's a feeling that there needs to be a significant change.
So I'm sorry.
I think that's accurate.
So you're saying if the budget is not voted and approved by December 31st, that it's automatically approved for the following year?
Uh, no, I'm not saying that. I'm saying this for solicitor, you want to?
I I think what could have
I'm saying if Wednesday, Wednesday, I if there's something in the budget that I don't agree with, but we're being asked to approve the first reading, you know, is there an opportunity? Because I don't want to vote yes to something and I'm not in total agreement.
Actually, is it, am I correct that first reading gets it into the process, what changes can be made?
Changes can be made, but also, as you initially suggested, council could propose that a bud that the first reading of the budget be approved subject to certain amendments or changes that they present.
Well, there is opportunity for council, if they so choose, to make changes between now and December 11th. That's an accurate statement.
That is including including Wednesday. Correct.
Yeah. So.
We made a budget amendment just last month, I believe, to the
To the current.
Exist the current budget.
Yes.
So that can be done as well in the new year.
That is correct. And
One of the things of the new year.
And there is a second amendment being requested also for first
On this agenda.
On to accommodate the one of those six scenarios that was talked about at the 11th hour on how to handle the unpaid pensions. There's million dollar factors that are have their thumbprint on this budget that we're working around and through.
And I mean, just hypothetically, you're not saying that this would happen, but what happens if the budget isn't passed by December 31st?
I'm going to defer to the solicitor.
It's not good. You're required by law to pass it by the 31st. You can always amend the budget in the next calendar year or so. It would behoove council to pass a budget with whatever changes they want.
It's always been my experience that we had to have a balanced budget approved by the end of December.
Which
Correct.
That is correct. And the way this is being presented, documented, is recognizing that the revenues and expenses balance, understanding we have $6.9 million less to work with. And it also shows the 43.2 million that is due for the unpaid to give a more holistic representation of the challenges in front of the city.
To that point, Justin, can you bring up that screen that shows the balance of revenues and expenses? So that the intent here is to pass a balanced budget with the caveat of, and you say it better than I do.
It's the prior year unfunded pensions. And the actual wording of the ordinance is was worked through, so it's as clear as we can possibly be that we're not hiding anything from anybody. We are trying to be full disclosure with what's involved with getting to this budget.
The CFO's reconciliation and presentation of the budget is absolutely compliant with the requirement that under the ordinance and state law that we have a balanced budget. He has he has disclosed other deficiencies for future payments and things like that, but his presentation in terms of of income and expenses is 100% compliant.
Thank you. There's a lot to digest, so I can appreciate the current hesitation, but we'll work through it.
Any other comments or questions? I think it's a yeoman's task to go through the entire budget, but if there are certain sections that are very personal to you, that you feel compelled to make sure it is right, that would be the strategy I'd I'd recommend.
I'm willing to.
The guys who've worked on the budget are
I'm I'm willing to.
They've gone through every line for for months. This this and these these guys, that's all they do for their in their lives is crunch numbers. We are asked to trust the people that we've hired to get us to this point. If there are things that you're very partial to, I would pay close attention to that, but to attempt to try to go through every page of every line, it would be daunting.
May also say that we we have been engaged, if you will, bottom up, top down. We have been engaged with each of the departments and directors and tried to do everything that they've requested. And so.
So I don't want to sound like the Sixers, but it's a trust the process, trust the people you've hired to do this work. This is this is why we pay you the big bucks. If there's anything, nothing else, since you're still part of the meeting, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you all for attending.